And thank you for being here.
I'm passing around cards that came to all of council, so it got put in my bones. The President of NNC, I just thought you should know that. Oh, party foul.
We're gonna get a little bucket to put your zippers on.
Here, here.
Have you seen the cell phone cages? Have you seen this?
Yeah, hit it with that gavel.
My mother-in-law.
All right, good evening, welcome. Welcome to the City of Xenia City Council Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, December 29, 2021. Normally, we do meet on Thursday. Appreciate everybody's attention for tonight, for meeting on Wednesday at 5:00, so staff can do year-end as city offices are closed after 12:00 tomorrow and on the 31st of this year. So, at this time, we will have an invocation led by Jeremiah Byrd of SOS Ministries. Thank you for being here, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Rebecca Dean. If everyone would please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for allowing us to wake up this morning in a free country. We also thank you for the City of Xenia. We thank you for the City Council. Father, I pray that your will will be done in this town. I pray that your Spirit will permeate throughout this whole area, Lord. I pray that fires will get lit here that goes out into other places, Father. And I just pray that you will bless everything that's done here tonight and as we go forward into the new year. And we just thank you for what your Son did on the cross, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Dean. Thank you Pastor Jeremiah Byrd. While you're here, if you want to come to the podium just for a second, for those that are watching, do you want to let us know what SOS Ministries is all about? Do you have a second?
Sure. SOS Ministries was designed to help rescue victims of human sex trafficking and drug addiction. We have a safe house here in Xenia, and we also have a sober living house that the ladies can come to when they are done. We also get gentlemen into alcohol and drug treatment. As of right now, and we formed three years ago, as of right now, we're at 192 rescues.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll call our meeting to order and ask our city clerk to do the roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Herschel?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. One order of business before our special presentation, that's approval of minutes from our December 9, 2021 regular meeting. Who would like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written? Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any corrections, additions, comments regarding the minutes? All right, seeing none, could I get a roll call, take a sec?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Abstained.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is special presentation. This is the administration of oaths for January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2025, for the terms for Vice President Levi Dean, Councilman Will Herschel, and Mayor Sarah Mays. And for the unexpired term, January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2023, for Wesley Smith. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the podium over to our law director, who's going to turn it over to Councilman Scrivens.
Thank you, Mr. Scrivens. Shall we all meet in front of the rostrum? Okay, repeat after me. This is the City of Xenia Oath of Office. I state your name, raise your hand. I state your name.
I am Sarah Mays.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
As a member of the City Council of the City of Xenia, Ohio.
As a member of the City Council of Xenia, Ohio.
And as mayor of the City of Xenia, Ohio.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Xenia.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Xenia.
And that I will faithfully and honestly and impartially discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of my office.
Congratulations, you're now officially sworn in.
We're gonna do a picture.
Yes, photo.
That means my family. There, Shelley, call me out, come on. Wait, wait.
You said family.
That's it, you want to be up there.
Come on, that'd be your family.
We're taking a picture, okay? Everybody in there.
Yeah, make it look like it's happy.
Can I leave this? Yes. Everybody look at me. No, I can't. She's out. She's out today. Thank you.
Sure.
Whoever.
Is that you, Gator?
We'll take just a couple minutes, guys, and then we'll come on back.
Do you all have to get your signed oaths that Thomas Lee sent you down? Good, I do. Okay, Sarah.
Yeah, we cleared out.
Friday? Okay, well, they're on the ceiling.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, what, where you want some pork around here? That's right.
No, no, we did Christmas. That would have been a gay marriage.
Did you enjoy the pictures I sent you? With your rookie on Santa's lap? With your rookie on Santa's lap? I said it, do you?
Are you guys ready? You guys ready to get started? Okay, so, Michelle, do we have any comments on emails? Okay, all right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome back to our City of Xenia Council Meeting. Our first item after special presentation is audience comments. And if anyone that is in the audience at this time would like to address City Council, you may do so at this time, please come to the podium, give us your name, address for the record. All right, seeing none, and also was informed, we had no emails this week to the city clerk. So, we'll move on to old business. Our first item, number one, is Ordinance 2021-23, which is a second reading. This is re-titling Part II, amending Title II of Part II, and re-titling and amending Title IV of Part II of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia. This is introduced by Mayor Mays at our December 9 meeting.
Thank you, sir, I'll move for passage.
Move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Herschel. Questions, comments, concerns regarding this ordinance?
Just one comment. I want to thank the law director for her due diligence in going through every chapter in this particular section of the code, and bringing it up to the table. Well, thank you publicly.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you very much. Our next item is Ordinance 2021-24, also a second reading. This is amending Section 274.07 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia, Ohio, to add the classified position of a management analyst in the IT, and amending Section 260.03 to reallocate pay distributions for all IT department personnel and for the accounts receivable manager. This was introduced by Councilman Scrivens at the December 9 meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you, move for passage by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Herschel. Any further discussion or comments, concerns regarding the second reading?
Council President?
Yes.
I just want to state that I definitely feel that there's a need for this position. I just don't think that it's the right time to add this position. That's all I'd like to add.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or concerns? And we have Mr. Keith Pageant from IT here tonight. If anyone has any direct questions for him, I'm sure he'll be happy to come to his podium.
I would like to have Mr. Pageant to come and defend the addition of a new position in his department.
Thank you, Councilman. The initial need for this role is that the expansion of IT with the amount of digital that's now used in the world. The original idea was that we'd be using less paper and doing more stuff on computers. Now, we all know that it didn't work that way. We use as much paper, if not more than ever, but we also use computers so much more. With the growth of that, in 2014, when we would be generally dealing with maybe a couple major cybersecurity issues or major projects a year, we're now getting some of those two in a week. The expanse of computer use and digital use, and the expanse of cities using digital and computer and technological tools, has expanded such a rate that we're desperately in need of more help on these times. What this would do, this position would take up the management analyst role. This would take on bill-paying general projects aiming for help tickets while we focus on the major projects, focus on directing things, and it frees me up to actually direct as a director needs to. This is just a natural expanse of what we need. In 2014, when the first, in 2013, when the first report was made, they actually suggested that we have five people on the team, they only filled four. So, we were already down one, and at this point, we're just in desperate need for help. We have at present 107 projects on our list of projects to work on that doesn't include help tickets, and we're just free up a lot of time. Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pageant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pageant?
With that, Mr. President, I'll move to previous question.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution 2021-B. This is an introduction. This is authorizing the execution of the Consolidated Dispatch Agreement and an associated memorandum of understanding with Green County Board of Commissioners for a continued operation of the Xenia-Green Central Communications Center.
President Smith, correction, there's a typo on the agenda, this is actually a second reading.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is the second reading. Okay, and this was introduced by Councilman Herschel at our December 9 meeting.
Mr. President, I'll move for passage.
Thanks, move for passage by Councilman Herschel. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Move for comments or discussion at this time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, Councilman Scrivens and I were able to go to the last, or the meeting before the last of the Green County Commissioners, where this was proper for them, and they did approve both the MOU and the new agreement for the dispatch.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Councilman Scrivens?
I'd just like to again compliment the law director on what we call contract law. She's written in everything that we've asked her, and the county has agreed to it, so I'll say again, thank you for your due diligence.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. There's no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Our first item in new business is Ordinance 2021-25, titled Emergency. This is amending Ordinance 2021-21 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Xenia, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending this year, December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency. This item was delivered to us tonight at the table, and at this time, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Holloway to discuss this.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, at the end of each year, councils ask to pass an appropriation ordinance to just kind of write the books for the current year. This allows us to make sure that all accounts have positive ending balances, funds are balanced. Usually, the issues are in personnel, and they're very minor if people change their insurance plan mid-year or add dependents, things like that. So, these are minor appropriation adjustments for the current year, just to balance the books before the end of the year. We are requesting this as an emergency so that we have time to file it with the county auditor prior to the closing of the year.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Holloway? And I would comment that every year, this is standard, to get this as an emergency right before the end of the year. So, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to provide these appropriations as an emergency.
So, moved as an emergency?
Thanks, moved by the mayor?
I'll second that.
And seconded, I'm sorry, by Councilman Branham?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Branham. Is there any other discussions tonight? Just to thank staff for all the extra work that you put in to close out the year, and at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you very much. Our next item is Ordinance 2021-26, also titled Emergency. This is providing temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Xenia through March 31 of next year, 2022, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Holloway?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another routine item each December council sees. This is looking forward. It's the appropriation of a temporary budget until a final budget is passed per our charter. We have to have a final budget by April 1, so this temporary budget is only in effect until March 31. Typically, we present the final budget to council in January. Once the year ends and we know where all the ending balances are, we can finalize that. So, this is just the temporary appropriation to sustain city services until a final budget is passed. There's very few changes in this temporary budget compared to the budget council received in October. There will probably be a couple changes in the final budget that are more substantial. We plan to have a Budget Finance Committee meeting January 13, I believe it was just scheduled. So, we'll go over some of those in detail before the final budget comes back to council, but not much has changed in the way of this temporary budget compared to what the budget council previously received. So, staff is recommending this ordinance as an emergency to make, to sustain operations effective January 1, 2022.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to appropriate the expenses through March 31 as an emergency? We'd like to make that motion. Moved by the Vice President. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any other discussion regarding this item? Councilman Scrivens, yes?
Thank you, sir. Just for the people watching, that this particular ordinance will allow the city to continue its operation until the final budget is approved. And before the final budget, we'll have a public hearing, so you'll be able to come and state your case. So, with that, Mr. President, I'll give up.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? No? All right, we'll get a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2021-27, titled An Introduction. This is providing for the special election on amendments to Articles 5, 8, and 10 of the Charter of the City of Xenia, under the said election to be held on the same day and time as the May 3, 2022 primary election. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our law director, Ms. Danette Fisher.
This is, as we discussed, we've discussed the charter for about all of last year. As we had discussed at your last meeting, what this ordinance will do is present Article 5, which is legislation, Article 8, which is boards and commissions, and Article 10, which is civil service, human resources, as one ballot item. As you know, the charter can't be amended except upon approval by the voters. So, this would present those three articles at the May 3 primary. We can then discuss presenting further articles. You may have heard, there's a bill pending at the state, House Bill 458, that's to do away with August special elections. I don't know that that will affect this because the Ohio Constitution specifically states, as far as charters, council can call for an election on those whenever council wants. So, I don't know that this would eliminate that. As far as the status of House Bill 458, it did pass the House, it was sent to the Senate, and it has been referred to committee. It has not been passed. But this is the start, this first three articles. As we discussed, I think if we break it down into sections, the proposed amendments, I think it's going to be easier for us to communicate that information to our voters because it's less to try and digest at one time. So, 5, 8, and 10, you have seen these. This is exactly the same as what was presented to you in the fall, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions for the law director?
So, one question, and this is a small item, but on the Chapter 212 that we just passed under the ordinances, it talks about under legislative actions that we have ordinances, resolutions, and motions, but it labels it there administrative motions, and in the charter review recommendation, they label it ordinances, resolutions, and procedural motions. Is there any reason why we had two different names for the motion titled the administrative versus procedural, or is there any issue with that?
The rewrite to Part 2 and Part 4 was based on current charter language. I can tell you right now, if the amendments proposed to Article 5 pass, we will have to go back.
Okay.
And redo Part 2. That's part of the reason we kind of held up on the rewrites of Part 2 and 4, to wait and see if we got those charter amendments passed. But the language that's currently proposed in 2 and 4 is based on current charter language. If the charter passes, then yes, we will have to go back and make changes.
Okay, got it.
Because there will no longer be, for example, two readings on resolutions. We're the only city in Ohio that I am aware of that does that. That's just not normal procedure. But Part 2 addresses two readings on resolutions because that's what our charter currently says.
Correct, right.
All right, thank you. Question, answer. Okay, any other questions?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Mr. President, Madam Law Director, you said that the House Bill 458 would eliminate what? I didn't hear you finish your statement.
A House bill was introduced, the whole purpose of House Bill 458 is to eliminate August elections.
Right.
The sponsor of the bill made it very clear, the reason he's proposing that is that school districts in particular and other local jurisdictions use August elections for tax cuts, and he's trying to eliminate that. He was very open about that. There can still be special elections in August if there is a congressional election scheduled. I don't know that that's going to affect charter because they can't pass an Ohio Revised Code section that amends the state constitution. And the state constitution says that charter and charter amendments go before the voters when council says they do. So, I don't know even if House Bill 458 passed that it would have effect on us. The only thing I can think it would affect, if August elections, special elections are eliminated, and we wanted to proceed in August with a set of charter amendments, the cost of that election would be totally on us. That's the one effect I see. If 458 passes, then I think we will have to have a discussion. We have two or three more potential blocks of articles to present, so we will have to rediscuss the timing of how we want to do that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Fisher? Seeing none, who would like to introduce this tonight?
I'd like to introduce it.
Thank you, introduced by Mayor Mays. Our next item on the agenda is Resolution 2021, letter CCC, titled Emergency. This is authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Horton Medic unit and accessories from Horton Emergency Vehicles through the ODAS Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency. Mr. Holloway?
Thank you, Mr. President. Staff is recommending the purchase of a 2022 Horton Medic tonight. This was originally budgeted in the 2022 budget and planned in the CIP as part of our Medic Replacement Program. It'll be replacing a 2004 Medic with over 150,000 miles on it, much wear and tear. The Medic was intended to be purchased next year, but we were notified by Horton that the price will be going up, and there is long delays, like 12 to 18 months before we'll get it anyway. So, if we could put our order in before the year-end, they would honor the current pricing and the quote they've given us, which would save us about $12,500. So, staff believes it's in the city's best interest to go ahead and order the Medic this year. We won't pay anything until the Medic arrives, hopefully in less than 18 months, but that will save the city a little bit of money on the purchase of this much-needed Medic. So, staff is recommending this as an emergency tonight to authorize the purchase of a 2022 Horton Medic unit through the Ohio Purchasing Program at a price not to exceed $313,311.12.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Holloway? And I see we have our fire chief here. Do anything you'd like to add?
Just a little bit of history. We currently run four Medics in our station, and actually, this year, we had six, and we have sold two of those because we found that the, with, into our rotation program, we don't need those backup Medics like we needed in the past. So, we did do away with two Medics this year and reduced our fleet by two. So, this is replacing one of the last old-style Medics that we have, so we'll be all at the Dodge, which is what our garage highly recommends. Like Mr. Holloway said, not to exceed $313,312. The reason why we did not to exceed, because that price may come down around $30,000 to $35,000, depending on the cot and the load system. We'll be doing a, possibly a refurb on the load system if, when they pull it out of one vehicle, put it into the other. If it's usable, then that means we don't have to buy that. This price includes all that into this, and we're hoping that we can reduce this price about $30,000 to $35,000, which puts us where we originally had budgeted for, and that's what we're going to try to do.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Rigsby or Mr. Holloway?
This is for the chief.
Yes. Yes, Mr. President.
Chief, you said we've sold two of the old ones.
Correct.
Now, when we acquire this new one, will we be spinning off one of the four that...
That is correct. Yes. We will stay with four Medics from here on out.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Looks like you'll be on the phone tomorrow if this passes, right?
Lock that price.
Thank you. So this is an emergency item? Who would like to make a motion as an emergency to approve the purchase of this Medic Unit?
I'll move.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Urschel. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Excuse me. Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Yeah.
Councilman Scriven?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Hi. I'm sorry.
Aye. Thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution... Thank you, Chief Rigsby, for being here tonight, too. Our next item on the agenda is Item 5. It's Resolution 2021, Triple D, titled "An Emergency." This is to award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Martin Painting and Coating Company for the Glady Run Wastewater Treatment Plant Concrete Tank Rehabilitation Project and declaring an emergency. Mr. Hallaway, would you care to explain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past couple of years, the condition of the concrete walls and erosion basins at the Glady Run Wastewater Treatment Plant have been deteriorating. And it's time to do some repair and maintenance on those. So staff solicited bids for some concrete work and painting of the erosion basin walls and received two bids. Martin Painting and Coating Company was selected with the best price of $70,692. They're the same entity that performed similar work at Ford Road back in 2018, and staff was very satisfied with their work on that contract. So staff is recommending tonight, we award the bid to Martin Painting and Coating Company for the Glady Run Wastewater Treatment Plant Concrete Tank Rehabilitation Project at a not-to-exceed price of $70,692.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hallaway? So just got two bids.
No, they're very different in price.
Are you guys happy with that?
I think on the second page, you can see, one was $127,000 and one was $70,000. In ideal world, you have a lot of bidders, but thankfully we got...
You guys are familiar... I don't know this company. Are you familiar with them?
The engineering department is. I'm not familiar with them, but they were satisfied with their work previously.
Very good. All right. Any questions for Mr. Hallaway? All right. Again, this is an emergency item. Who would like to make that motion to award the bid per emergency?
Senator.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Branham. I'll second that, so we can move on. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scriven?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next item, Resolution 2021, Triple E, also titled "Emergency." This is authorizing the execution of the participation agreement for the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement with Janssen, Johnson, and Johnson pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the material terms of July 21, 2021, National Opioid Settlement Agreement and declaring an emergency. Did I go okay on that? Madam Law Director, could you explain this?
I apologize for the long title. It actually came to us that way.
That's all right.
We discussed at your December 9 meeting that we had received information of possible settlement with the Janssen... Their parent company is Johnson &amp; Johnson, so we tend to call it the Johnson &amp; Johnson suit. Participation in the settlement of that agreement was going to take place through the One Ohio Program, which council had already approved participation in back in August for the three distributors. I had already said and signed us up to participate. The following day, Friday, December 10, at 2:10, I received an email that Johnson &amp; Johnson wanted any city with a population in excess of 10,000 to formally approve participation by resolution. We've got until January 3 to file that. So that's what this resolution is tonight. Just authorizes our participation as the city in the settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson. I can't give you exact figures. How much we could get potentially from this settlement, much like the earlier One Ohio, depends upon participation rates. How many subdivisions, political subdivisions, participate? If we hit a 95% participation rate, our estimated direct payment is between about $41,000 and about $59,000. There then would be a payment of about $8.5 to $12.5 million. That would go to Region 14. If you remember, under the One Ohio Agreement, Ohio was divided up into regions. Xenia is in the Region 14. There'd be $8 to $12 million that would come to that for further distribution down to the different political entities. So this is just approving our participation. Johnson &amp; Johnson has asked all cities, again, excess of 10,000, has to formally approve it. So that's what I'm asking you to do this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for our Law Director tonight? Mr. President?
Yes. So the alternative is, if we choose not to participate in this agreement, we would have to pursue that on our own or under some other umbrella arrangement, which there is none at this time.
Yes.
So the reason we're principally doing this is the work, the groundwork has been laid, and we get to participate in that. We don't have to expend the resources to go pursue independent of this. Fair statement.
I had emailed you all last week, the week before. If you saw the news, we thought we had a settlement in Purdue, the Purdue Pharma case. And the U.S. District Court, no, I said the bankruptcy court, didn't have authority to do what it did, so we're back to square one. If we see any money from Purdue Pharma, it's going to be yours. So the One Ohio plan that they set up to be able to distribute those funds, I think it's a way to get money to the local jurisdictions quickly.
Very good. Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you. Madam Law Director, now it's my understanding... Correct me if I'm misunderstanding. So we'll attain $41,000 to say $59,000. And this is specifically for treatment of individuals with substance abuse and strategies and substance abuse avoidance and awareness education. Now, is there any stipulation on the other monies that we may receive? Can we redirect those monies?
Any money that we get under these programs has to be used for opioid mitigation. I'd love to be able to tell you, we could use this money to pave streets, but we can't. That's just not what it's for. It could be things like overtime that we already have paid the police for increases in calls that they've experienced due to opioid crisis. And also to help mitigate future programs and things like that. But that, the money would be limited under the settlement agreement to mitigating any costs we have incurred or might incur due to the opioid epidemic.
And I see also awareness education, so we can do a little something with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions for Madam Law Director tonight? All right. Not seeing any. Keep in mind, it's also an emergency. Who would like to entertain a motion to participate in this agreement as an emergency?
So moved as emergency.
Thank you. Moved as an emergency by Mayor Mays. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Urschel. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scriven?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution 2021, Triple F, entitled "Introduction." This is requesting the advance payment of 2021 tax settlements from Green County Auditor. Mr. Hallaway, would you care to explain this?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Staff is requesting council's authorization tonight to request from the county taxes that have been paid and are just sitting with the county auditor. The county auditor regularly disperses these in February and August. But at the request of the finance director with a resolution from council, will disperse those early. So that allows us to hold on to the cash. It improves our cash flow, and we can make interest off of that money. So staff is seeking tonight an introduction from council to authorize the finance director to request those advanced tax payments of 2021 property taxes from the county auditor.
Thank you. We seem to be doing this like almost quarterly. Is that about what we're doing?
Yeah. We do it several times a year.
All right. Thank you. Who would care to introduce that tonight?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Introduced by Councilman Urschel. Our next item is an administrative motion approving the schedule of bills tonight in the amount of $576,000. Mr. Hallaway, anything for us on the schedule basis tonight?
I have nothing to know.
Nothing further to add? Any questions for Mr. Hallaway tonight?
Yes, President. Thank you. I had spoken to Mr. Hallaway earlier regarding a few items I had concern with. This is just one that I hadn't spoken on, page 4, about 4th from the bottom, dots and garage doors. Is that for one of the fire stations?
I believe it is for the city garage on a tower, just based on looking where the funds come out of. It doesn't look like a fire fund, but I don't have any detail beyond that.
I didn't have the codes where everything's allocated to. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions on the bills for Mr. Hallaway tonight? And thank you for stepping in for Mr. Duke and his staff, Mr. Lake, who's out sick tonight.
Oh, wow.
So thank you for being here. Other than that, if we... I need a motion to pay the bills, please.
Senator.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean, or Councilwoman Dean, sorry. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Mayor. This time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scriven?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Appointed Officials' Reports. At this time, we'll go to Mr. Hallaway. You can do city manager and finance director.
Sounds good. Just two items. The city is planning another auction. It'll probably end sometime in February, and then hopefully will be listed here in the next couple of weeks. But there's a lot of police evidence surplus that we're getting rid of. A lot of bicycles and random equipment and stuff that will be included in that, as well as some vehicles. So I'll make sure to notify you all of that once it goes live, but just keep that on your radar. Also, our offices are closed all day tomorrow and Friday. So we'll be back in Monday for the public.
All right. Thank you. That's the only two items?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for our acting city manager tonight? No? Thank you, sir. And Happy New Year to you and your family. All right. And next is Madam Law Director.
Just two things this evening. First of all, at your first meeting in January, I will have some amendments for you for the rules of council. Those amendments are based on the new law you just passed with the changes to Part 2, specifically Chapter 210, the new Chapter 210, which is city council. So we'll have a few changes there. Second, we will be proceeding with the rewrite and update of our Xenia City Code. A lot of what we have on the books is still from the '60s. It's time to get those things updated. There are some things that we are going to wait and see. For example, Title 8, which is boards and commissions, we do want to wait and see if the voters approve the changes to the charter before we proceed with that. But the next section will be the administrative code. I'll be working with staff over the course of the year to get that cleaned up and get that back to you. So Legislative Review Committee, they're going to have a very busy year next year. And that's all I have tonight. Wish you all a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for the Law Director tonight? Same to you. Thank you very much. Next is reports of boards, commissions, and committees. The only one on the agenda tonight is border zoning appeals. Mayor Mays?
Our meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or concerns for the Mayor regarding BZA? Nope. You've had four years on that.
Yes, I have.
Thank you for your service on that. Next is council comments. We'll start with Councilman Branham tonight.
Don't really have anything further to add. Just want to say Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you very much. Anyone have anything for Councilman Branham tonight? No? Councilwoman Dean?
See y'all in 2022.
Thank you very much. Anyone have anything for Councilwoman Dean tonight? All right. And Councilman Urschel?
Yeah. Mayor Mays and I were able to go and attend a Blue Christmas service at Christ Episcopal Church. It was co-hosted by them and First Evangelical Lutheran. And I just want to tell the pastors of the two churches, thank you for having that service. There's a lot of... The Blue Christmas service is a tradition amongst the Episcopal's and the Lutherans and the Methodist's. And really, it was there to help folks who were grieving during the holiday times. And many of the services we have at the other churches assume there's a lot of joy and celebration, but it doesn't really help someone who's grieving from a financial loss or a family loss or a personal loss. And I just want to commend all those pastors. They did just a tremendous job with those services, and it was just a very comforting service to have. So hoping that we can have some more of those in the future as well, too. And I just brought a couple of items I got for Christmas to share. I got a city council game. It was given to me by my youngest son. So we may have to have an offsite where we actually play this and learn how city council actually works. It's pretty amazing. I did that for my son, and I said, "Do I really need to play this, as I'm spending a lot of time here as well, too?" And he said, "Yeah, I do." That's right. The mayor says, "I need to get up speed." Very good. And then the other one, I know this has been out for a while, but I got a copy of Xeniopoly. And I just... Whoever put... I don't know. Whoever put this together, I thought they did a tremendous job of hitting the main features of Xenia and the locations of the different parts. So this is going to be one of my favorite games. But in terms of the election, what we just had, there was a timely statement here on the back of the game. And just some advice from the makers of Xeniopoly says, "Choose your token in advance to go to Xenia. You may soon be the mayor or out of the game for eating too many fried veggies from the next restaurant. So I think the point they're making is if you want to be mayor, don't spend too much time at next, but maybe a little bit of time is okay. So anyways, it's in the game, and if you buy your own copy and have that as well, too. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilman Scrivens, can you top that?
I can't. That's an act, I swear. First thing, I'd just like to say that I want to thank the city, the people of the city of Xenia for all that they've done to make Xenia a very wonderful place to live. It's every individual that makes this place what it is. We want to just thank you for being who you are. Then also, Mr. President, I'd like to see some signage put up in our city cemetery that we've come to acquire. There's no signage there. It needs to be improved quickly enough. And with that, I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and stay safe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Holloway, can you maybe talk to staff about that, see if we can get that in a budget for some signage? You're talking to identify it as the cemetery name?
Signage.
Yeah, very good. All right, thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Anyone have anything for him tonight? And thanks for administering that oath of office. That has to be done by a notary or an elected official. So thanks for volunteering to do that tonight. Next is Mayor Mays.
It's a couple of weeks without too many actual mayor events. There was a lot of personal events, multiple weddings, and Christmas parties. We, as Councilman Herschel said, went to the Blue Christmas service, and that was on my note to also thank the Episcopal Church and the Lutheran Church here in town. It was just, it was very well done, and there was just a really good opportunity for reflection and some silence and prayer, and it was very meaningful. On December 11, I did have an opportunity to, a chance to attend the AXP, the Alumni of Ex-Pupils, the orphanage group out at the Schindler Banquet Center. They had a Christmas party. And it was a really neat luncheon. A lot of folks came out that used to, that grew up there at OSSO and OVCH, and there's Santa there and did a lot of collection of Christmas gifts for our children. And our firefighters came out. You were required to sing, your table had to sing a Christmas carol in order to eat lunch if you wanted to be excused for lunch. So that was very enjoyable to hear some karaoke by our firemen and one of our men sitting on Santa's lap. It was great. So just a great luncheon, and I wanted to thank them for inviting my family and just allowing us to come and enjoy that time with them. I had an opportunity to meet two authors there, have both written books about their experience. They called it "The Home" and then another book, "Blue Popsicle." Both have had a significant impact on me and just understanding a lot of our history, and I would recommend both of them. It was a really neat experience to meet both of those ladies. Obviously, very Happy New Year to everyone and looking forward to 2022. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mayor Mays. Vice President Dean?
I don't really have anything else to add, but kind of Happy New Year.
All right, thank you very much. Tonight, just a reminder to council members, if you could get, I sent an email out, if you could give me five or six items, council priorities, if you could email that. I got a few responses from some of the council mayor and the mayor. If you could send that to either the city clerk or myself, and I'll forward that to her, we're going to use those to compile for our work session, or not our work session, I'm sorry, our retreat on the 15th. So I want to give that to staff next week if we can. If you could do that in the next day or two, that would be greatly appreciated. No right or wrong answers on that, just some ideas that you have that are near and dear to you. Just a reminder, we got a few things coming up after the New Year's. The BRACA meeting for January 4 is canceled, but we do have a property management committee meeting, I believe. That's just recently scheduled. That'll be at 4 o'clock that day. Also, on the 13th, that'll be our first regular meeting of the year for 2022 for city council. That'll be at 6 o'clock. But on the 13th, at 4:30, will be Budget Review Committee. So that'll be from 4:30 to 5:45. Follow the January 13 regular meeting, we will have a short executive session that night. Just to go over appointed official contracts, they're all five, I'm sorry, all three appointed officials, five-year contracts are actually up this year in 2022. So we need to discuss that. And then I believe that is all we have scheduled the next couple of weeks. So we'll go back to the 6 o'clock Thursday meetings starting in January. So thanks tonight for everybody that's watching, for accommodating city staff for tonight's meeting at 5 o'clock. On behalf of the city of Xenia and your Xenia City Council and mayor, Happy New Year. Stay safe and appreciate you watching and for your prayers for our city. So if anyone does not have anything else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brannum.